Hello, we are happy to have the Democratic nominee for Lycoming County Commissioner, Denitra Moffett, here with us today. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for the invitation.
And we have several questions to ask Ms. Moffett. Uh, what can county government do within the next four years to achieve property tax relief?
So achieving property tax relief is never going to appease everyone across the board. Um, you're gonna have some who are gonna say, we need to have a reassessment, which in Lycoming County hasn't happened in quite a while. Um, but a reassessment is going to, is different when it comes to, um, the eyes of residential property and commercial property. So real estate is, in the eyes of real estate, and a reassessment is different when you're buying a house. Um, so it could do one of two things. It can make your property go down, it can make it go up. So will it have a good sign on property tax relief? Yes or no? We wouldn't know. So could a reassessment be worth it is the question? You wouldn't know unless you do a reassessment. Um, so within the next four years of property tax relief, we will really have to look at, one, actually bringing, you know, in helping to bring in more housing. We don't really have enough houses per people. So we have to tackle that on the forefront first. Um, but also increase our population. Um, the population decline itself is, is gonna be the root of a lot of the problems we have in the county. So we have to, one, bring in affordable housing, so we can bring in people to live in those houses. And the more people we have, we can address the property tax relief because more people, we have more people spending taxes, you know, lower. So that in a nutshell is gonna really be an answer to a lot of the problems the county is having. Cause if our, if our population continues to decline, that's gonna affect the funding that we get for the county.
Should property tax relief be targeted to homeowners or elderly homeowners? Or should it be pursued more broadly for all residential, commercial, and industrial properties? And why?
So as a homeowner now in two different states, First Mississippi and now VA, um, I would say, I think, you know, our elderly people are struggling now. I think probably more than they ever have and probably one of the most, um, areas is their homes because they're living longer. And they're staying in homes that is starting to deteriorate from the inside out. Um, so if we can allow them to stay in their homes instead of putting them in nursing homes, because nursing homes are expensive. And putting them in a nursing home, I'd say from personal experience with my grandmother, it kills them off, and I don't mean to say that in a bad way, but it tends to kind of shorten their lifespan because they become depressed. Um, but I would wanna target it to, I would like to say elderly homeowners, because they need that, that break themselves. Cause a lot of them are on fixed incomes. You know, they're retired, they're on some type of SSI, whatever the case is. So I would like to target it for, to, to the elderly first. The reason why I would not say commercial itself, because here in our county, we have so many abandoned, um, commercial buildings, and the owners don't pay, like, the cold fines. They're just abandoned, they're out of code, and they don't pay anything. They might pay the fines just to, you know, do away with it. They're not selling them. And these abandoned buildings are eyesores to a lot of people here. And the main questions I get from so many people is, why don't they sell it? Why doesn't the county step in? Why doesn't the city step in and make them get rid of it? We could do something with that building. I totally agree. I come from a state where the mayor can enforce things to where, you know, they make the homeowner in like a share of sale or whatever, or auction. And I think that's great because why don't we get some type of revenue from those abandoned buildings? Instead of the five hundred dollars for fines or whatever it is. So I wouldn't get a tax relief necessarily to the commercial people. And, you know, the industrial properties is a tricky subject, so to speak, because you do want the businesses here. However, I would not give them a tax relief to the point of, it's not trickly down into the smaller businesses into our economy here. Because that's what the trickle-down tax relief is supposed to be. You're supposed to tax the rich, so it trickles down to our lower economies here. That's, that was the whole purpose of it to begin with. So, um, I do feel like we do need to impose taxes on those industrial properties to where they can, they're paying their fair share. And we can see the benefits and reap those benefits here in a county like Lycoming County. So I hope I answered the question. It was clear.
What is one program or service for which the county could cut spending? What is one program or service on which the county should consider increasing spending?
Cutting spending in the county? Um, hmm. So one service that I know was not funded was, I wanna say about three to six million dollars for a prison that they did not fund, which I thought was a great idea. Um, I really cannot think of one because I personally feel like, from what I've researched and found out, um, so a lot of the programs that the county does have, like the Geo Reentry Program, um, RMS, um, they're, they're doing good things in the county. Um, and I think the general public feels as if the government's, you know, the county spends too much money. Um, I will say, the commissioners currently are planning on, um, appealing the controller's decision. I don't, I think that's a waste of money. So I would say that. And with someone who has a legal background, I was a paralegal for years, have a, you know, paralegal studies degrees and associates and bachelors and currently getting one in criminal justice, the law is the law. And I feel like if we're gonna go by what the county code is, which says she's supposed to have, you know, the ledger, they've lost three times. There's no need to keep appealing your loss. To me, as a taxpayer, not even looking at as a candidate for county commissioner, I'm looking at as a taxpayer and someone who can read, you know, a legal code. Um, that's a waste of money to continue to appeal and waste county funds on something that you're probably gonna lose again. So if I become county commissioner, I'm gonna be the one that's gonna say there's no need to continue this. Um, increasing spending for me, um, is between mental health and intervention programs for kids. Because we don't have things here for our kids to do, and they just gave money for Kappa. I think it's great, but what else do we have? No, we don't have any type of like intervention things for kids between those ages of like ten and sixteen and seventeen. So what are they doing when school is out during the summer? What are they doing to keep them from joining the gang, selling drugs, education purposes? We don't have it. So, you know, I come from where we have boys and girls clubs everywhere. We don't have those here. And those were great programs that kept them busy, that kept them into RIT programs, performing arts programs, helped them with school, um, gave them bikes. It kept them busy, so it deterred them from doing other stuff outside of it. And so I just feel like, you know, we could use money that we do have instead of spending on a frivolous lawsuit into, into that for our kids. If we say we care about our kids, whether they're here or not here, then let's put our money where our mouth is, so to speak.
How can the county better assist municipal police forces?
So I've talked to the police officers here and, um, the county commissioners a while ago actually set aside funding for, um, mental health training. And it's never been implemented because they couldn't find someone to teach the class. And this was stopped. So the police officers want mental health training for them on the job, but also to how they respond to maybe somebody that's having a mental health, you know, problem. Um, but nothing has been done about it. Um, the police chiefs I've talked to, the sergeants I've talked to, all say, we can bring somebody in. We just need the commissioner to say, hey, this is how much money we'll give you for it. So to know that it's already been allocated, nothing about the training has been done, you know, that. Also, um, cultural training. I don't, I've never been one to say, let's defund the police. I don't think that's gonna solve anything because we, we need them. But if we're requiring all these years of training for doctors and nurses and lawyers, why not also do more training for our police department? We do it for the military, you know, on-the-job training for police officers. Give them more resources while they're on the job. They say they're in between a call and nothing's going on. Okay, let's do them some type of cultural class or DI training. Something that's going to allow them, depending on where they are, that's gonna give them more training to their environment, community training. Just like we had shot with the cop, eat with the cop. Stuff like that that's gonna make them more knowledgeable about their area. And they like that because you have to know your community. If you don't know your community, you don't know what's going on in your community. How can you better police your community? So I, to me, I think let's not give them new cars, you know, where they need them, yes, but just paying fifty thousand dollars for F-150, that's not gonna help them. They need the on-the-job training. But also let's better prepare them for when they go out into their community, they know what they're dealing with. That's, that's the feedback I'm getting. Matter of fact, I'm here to sit to go on a ride along with our police officers because I wanna know what they're saying. I wanna know what feedback they're getting in their community.
What improvements or changes to the county's criminal justice system? Whether it be the courts, prosecutors, supervisory services, should the commissioners recommend?
Oh, I love this one. So, um, like with Ju- Judge Butt's, um, drug court. I think it's a great idea. Love it. Um, I went to Geo Reentry's graduation a couple of weeks ago. My recommendation would be once less expanded, you know, um, because I believe in giving people second chances. Because if somebody has to believe, you know, that people can change. And I do believe there's some good, yeah, there's some bad, but not all, just like not all cops are bad people, not all addicts are gonna relapse. So my recommendation to, um, the, our county's criminal justice system is, we need to actually have people in these positions, whether it's a prosecutor, whether it's a judge, probation officers, who actually care. Cause the main thing I heard across the board at the graduation was, they cared, they believed in me, you know? And I know it's hard to properly vet those type people. But once you get these people in these positions and we see problems occur, we need to be able to do what's right by, by our people in, in these programs. Because, um, addiction doesn't know a color, doesn't know gender, doesn't know age. It, I think it hits all of us at some point. And I have an aunt who's been an addict for over thirty years, and once you're addicted, you're addicted. So we have to believe them, you know, it's hard to, but we, I say my recommendation would be to be, be reliable and be vetted and be able to work together, but also be responsible. So believe them or hear them because they just wanna be heard. And that was, that's, that was the main thing I heard from them. I just wanted somebody to see me and hear me. And I was just like, oh my God, this was all they needed, you know, to hit, to, to get to this point. And the main thing they told Judge Butt was, you saw me for me. And so my recommendation would always be to anybody involved in the justice system is, you have to be able to relate or, you know, have some type of empathy or sympathy when you're dealing with people on this type of magnitude. And I know it's hard when you're dealing with the people that you deal with in the criminal justice system, but, um, we're human. And, um, it's, it's hard to have empathy with some people. But, um, I would recommend some type of, um, some type of more mental health. I'm always advocate for mental health, especially after COVID. Cause I think it really, that really ravished a lot of people, mental health across the board. But some type of, some type of mental health training for these people involved in criminal justice system, but also those that are on trial for whatever. Because it's not just a mental health disease, but like their feelings there, what brought them to this point. We could, you know, on both sides, somebody's gonna need some type of help. I guess my recommendation would be make sure we're putting people in these positions that not only have the experience, but have the passion for the job and not just want a paycheck. But also on the other side of the aisle, try to make sure we're getting those people help that they need if they end up going to, you know, court, me going to jail or whatever. But make sure that we're helping on both sides of the aisle, so to speak. Hope I didn't just, I gave you an answer, answer.
How can the commissioners encourage job creation?
Oh, I love this one. So I'm a foodie like anyone else. I love food. Bringing in, um, fast food places to our county is not creating livable wage jobs. It's just not. You have people who are working two to three jobs just to, you know, make ends meet. We need to bring in jobs that are paying people to wanna come here and stay here. Get all boys back down to population. Walmart is one of the biggest, you know, everything. And they have the highest employee ratio that's on welfare. Just, it doesn't make any sense. So if we say, hey, come move to Lycoming County, and they ask, well, what do you have to offer? What's your job? You know, what's your employment rate? Oh, well, we have a Popeyes, we have, you know, a KFC, we have a Walmart, but what else do you have here? We, so I'm always gonna be advocate for, yes, families, but jobs, union jobs. I was a union child. My dad worked for Yeller Freight. He drove trucks. I love a union. Cause I was, I benefited the insurance. I was a benefit of, you know, watching them negotiate for better wages and all of that. So I know the good that they can do. But better job creation, letting in industries know, hey, we have this beautiful highway right here, and if you put a nice building right here off this highway and a nice billboard, why people coming here for little league? That might attract somebody from, I don't know, Jersey to wanna come here. Also, the Susquehanna, it is nice for kayaking, canoeing. That can bring in recreational industry. People can come here and sell kayaks, can come in here and sell, like, it's, we have so much potential as a county for so many things. And us being the largest county, well, next Erie, we've only tapped into ten percent of our resources. Why? Like, just my mind goes into overdrive when I think of what we could do as a county. Job creation, we haven't even gotten to what we could do. So we have recreation, we could bring in, have a cat, the high water. We can bring in what kayaking shows, whitewater raft, whatever, just off the Susquehanna alone. I know why we were gonna have to have the waves and everything, but just, we could use things off of that. Then, um, shop that. We know it closed down, but the, the industrial park alone is thriving. We can entice other peo- other big businesses there, across from the landfill. The same people that bought the mall sold part of that, they brought part of that as well. So another big business is coming off over there on fifteen. We can entice them, but we need to bring the jobs here. People will come. If you build, they say if you build, they'll come. We're building. But what else can we entice them with? We don't have the houses here for people to come either. There's literally no houses, or there's not enough houses for people to come stay. The apartments are full. Rent is out of control. So we need to encourage job creation by actually making livable wage jobs here. It's not ten, eleven, twelve dollars an hour. Um, minimum wage, we can, I just found out that other counties are actually pushing Harrisburg to raise, to raise minimum wage to fifty dollars an hour. Why haven't we? There's another thing we could do. So me, I'm all about pushing for better jobs to come in. There are not fast food places. Pushing Harrisburg to pass a bill for fifty dollars an hour, like, now. Um, talk to other businesses about, hey, what can we do to help you guys, you know, bring in more revenue? I, I don't mind working in, you know, I've worked, I've been in the trenches, military-wise, whatever. But I don't mind doing it as commissioner. I would, I don't mind doing it because I believe everybody deserves a livable wage. Especially as a, as a parent, you know, all of that. We, it's been past time.
You, you've alluded to this problem a couple of times. Uh, how can the commissioners encourage the construction of new housing?
So we have, um, to me, you know, they, I've heard commissioners, I go to the commission meetings every Thursday. And I heard them talk about how wood is so high. Okay, so we have, I don't know, so many empty tall buildings, like the one that's right there. Okay, so why not turn it into an affordable housing development? Well, how do you do that, Denitra? Well, let's say you, we, somebody buys it in a share of sale. You can fix it up, I'm sure, for not an extremely high amount of money. And you turn the places into apartments that people can afford. Because thirteen hundred dollars rent for a one-bedroom apartment that's five hundred square feet is not affordable. I don't care what anybody says. Um, developments like the place at the mall that they wanna turn into. They wanna turn some of those into affordable housing. And from what I'm hearing, it's about seven hundred dollars a month. I could get behind that because one, it's right off the interstate, they're gonna have gas stations out there, and it's place for people to work. Okay, we need to actually listen to the people that stay here in the community. You know, I've even said, come commissioner, I wanna have an actual community board. People in, that's actually in the community that stay here, that's been here for a while. What are you guys seeing that people are seeing, whatever? People cannot afford fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred dollars, twenty, six hundred dollars in rent for an apartment, for a house. It's just unfeasible. Encourage the construction of new housing, actually get with those construction companies and say, hey, I know you guys are trying to triple, excuse me, quadruple your profits, but if you start off with this and we work our way up to that, like, try to meet in the middle. I went and talked to the, um, West Branch Realty people. And I'd even say, you know, I would love if, you know, we could sit down, we could talk to you guys, because you know the housing market. You know what's going on here. Let's talk and let's see what you guys are seeing. They said the same thing, just don't have the houses. Okay, so what about building affordable housing, affordable apartments? It's the same thing. Get with people who know what's out there. So the constructs, for me, I would look at actually get with people that know what's going on. How can we build it? How much is it gonna cost? And start off with a good, mean, median, average pricing that according to the average income here in the county is not a lot. So I wouldn't fathom going over a thousand dollars for rent. Need to start off with that. And then keep that stable for a while. And that way you can easily make their money back. I would start off with a board of people and work my way up from there. Cause I just, you have to be able to work with the people that you have in your area in order to attract them to stay and work your way up. But the greed of it all is what, is, I think is causing us not to have affordable housing. People, people have the misconception that if you create affordable housing, it's gonna bring in, you know, a certain type of people. Um, they're gonna mess it up, they're gonna run it down, then it's gonna decrease the value. But we have to get away from this stereotype because people need somewhere to stay. And they'll pay for somewhere to stay if you, if you build it. But they just don't do it.
What is the most important attribute or characteristic of a county commissioner?
I can say so much about this. So, um, I would like to say that a county commissioner has to be, they have to be, hmm, they have to be empathetic because you are responsible for an entire county. And depending on the size of the county, you know, it's a lot of people, it's diverse. Um, and you are, you are so eloquently looking at funding for people who you might have never seen before and you might not have ever spoken to. So you have to dish out money for programs and for services and for your employees and, you know, go to bed at night with those decisions. So I would like to think that a county commissioner has to trust their judgment. So maybe empathy wasn't the right word. Um, the problem, I think, is you have some county commissioners or people in political office, period, who cannot relate to their constituents. You know, they don't know what it feels to live paycheck to paycheck. They don't know the struggles that their constituents are living through. And I have often told people that, um, I was a single mom at the age of twenty-four. I never met my husband. And so I was newborn in college and, you know, studying, holding the baby under my arm. And I met my husband a couple of years later. He adopted my oldest son. Um, I graduated my associate's, went to four-year, got my BS, we were in the military. And I signed a will at the age of twenty-three to, cause I had to, I was deployed. And so I know how it feels to not buy the bigger box of diapers. You have to buy the small box because you don't have the money for it. Or I can only pay half of this bill, can't pay the full bill. So when I tell people that I meet, I understand, I understand. Um, and you know, I, my husband and I have came a long way since then. But I, it really bothers me when I see certain people in office who are listening to their constituents and they just have a blank face. And I'm thinking to myself, I understand that pain. I've been there. And I'm thinking to myself, I understand that pain. I've been there, you know, I get it. And county, I just think a county commissioner has to have, I guess empathy might have been the word, empathy, sympathy. They have to be able to relate to the people that they're representing. Because if you cannot relate to the people that you're representing, you wouldn't, you know, the decisions you're making, can you, can you accurately say, I'm making this with you in mind? You know, I'm making this decision with these one hundred and thirteen thousand and forty-nine people in mind when I'm funding this Geo Reentry program, when I'm funding this mental health training for these police officers. Can you really say that? And when I did logistics in the military in Kuwait and I saw how it was just a different area, it was just a different government, it was a different, you know, system. And to be able to come home to my husband and to my now-two kids in a different atmosphere, political atmosphere, different everything. I tell people now, it's like, we, we're lucky. And to say that now, you know, is like, we're lucky. Because you guys just wouldn't understand the things I've seen in the Middle East, um, serving in the, you know, in the army because it's a different world on the other side of the country. So I, I would say sympathy, empathy, um, for a county commissioner.
Are there any issues or priorities you haven't touched on yet that you would like to?
So I think for, I don't know, for me, I, I'm, you know, I think logistically, cuz that's just how my brain has been working for the past ten years. Um, it would be the, just the problems with the county period for the last so many years, how, um, funding has worked, how, um, I said this happened before I got here, and so now that I've been researching and talking to people, um, to know that we have funded some things over other things that could have been funded way sooner. Um, and even though we're not directly correlated with the city, excuse me, that's its own other entity, um, I've, you know, kind of seen that it it doesn't tie in, but it does tie in because we kinda overlap in a way, I guess. But just the funding issues with the city and, you know, I guess the big hoopla with money missing with, uh, what was it, River Valley, River Valley Transit, um, or Authority or whatever, and I was just blown away with some of the stuff I found out about that. And so now we have, um, situation with the controller and our commissioners and that information going on with that. And so I think the issue is now, you know, it all boils down to money. And so the main thing I'm always asked is, well, you're a woman, so of course you're gonna go for the woman side. Like, not really. Um, but now the questions that I'm also asked is you're young, you're not from here. We don't know you. And you know, it's the other Democratic candidate that's running too, where he's from here, and I'm like, I don't even know, cuz like I said, I'm not from here. So I didn't even know who it was. Not gonna even lie, I'm not a baseball person, but, um, my priorities have always been different, I guess. So when I came here and I saw kids were not being taken care of, no, don't, we have the step program. But outside of that is like, nothing. And I, the only thing outside of Kappa that I think was funded since like two thousand and six, I believe. There was nothing else. And so that was kind of a, a little lump in my throat for me. Um, no, no more, I mean, I don't know, I just it was real hard for me to understand why we've had the, kind of the same people in office for so long in the county. This is no, in no way to me mean, but it was like older white men in office. Like for commissioners, I think Rick's been in for a while. I think Tony was there, had been in for a while. I think this is Scott's first term. And then I think before them, they had been in for a while. And so I was like, this, it's like the same thing and nothing. I won't say nothing has changed, but nothing has changed. And I just, I'm, I'm, I'm tired, you know, and I'm only thirty-two, but at what point did you, do you say, this is insanity? It's the same. Now, when do you get tired of the same old thing over and over again? So, even though I'm new here, it's just like back home Mississippi, you know, it's the same thing over and over again. So it's just so many issues or priorities that I haven't seen taken care of here. And they're just continuing over and over again. So that was my soapbox. I just had to, just had to say that, I'm sorry.
Well, thank you for joining us.
No, I appreciate it.
Hope you're having a good week.
I am, busy week.